Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council, formal council meeting for February 22nd, 2018, here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all those that are able, could you please rise, join us for a moment of silence, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is our minutes, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve the City Council meeting minutes A1.
It's been moved by Councilman Navarro and seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to accept Board and Commission meeting minutes B1 through 8.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kiwi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does move forward. Next item is the reports and announcements. I do have a proclamation. I want to come down. I'd like to invite the council down. If you could come down and join me. I'd like to, I know Jim Palmish and his colleagues, could you please come stand right here by this podium? Mr. Palmish is the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart Chapter 472 for the East Valley. He recently contacted my office to request that the city of Tempe be proclaimed as a Purple Heart City. I think this is a real honor. The city of Tempe has worked hard to be known as a city that honors our veterans, whether it be with a valor on 8th Street Project, which opens up tomorrow, for those that don't know, or a Veterans Memorial, or a Veterans Commission. We have a number of initiatives in our community aimed at recognizing veterans and improving their quality of life. I know that Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage, as a veteran, has a huge passion for this issue, and now, I'm happy to say that we are specifically honoring those in our community who have received a Purple Heart. This distinction is given to those individuals who were wounded or killed in the service of this country, a sacrifice that we all honor and are very greatly for. Without the Purple Heart awareness, awardees, actually, we likely wouldn't have the freedoms that we celebrate today in our very own country. I'd like to read a proclamation, and I'd like to have Commander Palmish have the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the organization. It states, "Whereas we have the freedom to maintain our way of life because of the contributions and sacrifices of military service members, and whereas the citizens of the city of Tempe, Arizona, have great admiration for the utmost gratitude for the men and women who selfishly serve our country and the armed forces, and many of the men and women have sacrificed their lives in battle while serving our nation and were awarded the Purple Heart Medal, post- oh, oh, posthumously. And whereas many citizens in our community were wounded in combat and were awarded the Purple Heart Medal in recognition of their bravery and service to our nation, and whereas we recognize the honor, the sacrifice, of the nation's men and women who were wounded or killed while protecting the freedoms that we enjoy." Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare the city of Tempe, Arizona, as the Purple Heart City as of February 22nd, 2018. Thank you.
Military Order of the Purple Heart wants to give you this plaque in the city of Tempe in token of our appreciation for your support and the council members for their support. In addition to this, I do have a proud Purple Heart support pen that I'd like to give you and each member of the council.
Thank you.
In addition, I'd like to thank Cynthia Benedict for her help in getting us together and being our liaison.
Thank you so much. I thank you for our service to our country. If you can't get a picture after we get the Purple Heart pins. Yeah. Please. Does your proclamation? Do you need to stand back? Let's keep talking down.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We do have a staff presentation we're going to have on fleet fuel diversification.
Mayor and council, Brayden K., Sustainability Manager. In compliance with our commitment to the mayor's global covenant for climate and energy, the city of Tempe has made a commitment to create a climate action plan by 2019. The plan will identify policies, programs, and infrastructure that the city can invest in to take climate action. The plan will be aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions in energy, transportation, waste, and water, and will include actions to respond to extreme heat. One critical area of the plan will be to lower emissions in our transportation system. This will include investments in transit fleet, bike and pedestrian improvements, and in our city fleet. I will come to talk later in more detail about the climate action plan as a whole, but we wanted to take the opportunity to highlight the great work that Public Works Field Services Fleet is already doing to reduce emissions. Here's Kevin Devery, our fleet manager, to share his team's work.
Evening, councilmembers. So, I'm proud to say we've made some significant advancements in the implementation of alternative fuels in the Tempe fleet. If you look at the first table here, it is a last-minute change, a little bit different than the one that's on your screen. Basically, just separating off for off-road units versus on-road units. Currently, our fleet is 5% electric and 4% alternative fuel out of approximately 1,000 units that have engines. One of our proudest achievements of this is our 15 CNG units, which is our solid waste section refuse trucks. Refuse trucks are some of the highest fuel use units for their class, as well as electric utility carts. We have 17 in the fleet. It's appropriate units as well. The benefits are very obvious, of course, hitting the triple bottom line in a positive way. For our financials, alternative fuels represent about a 30% reduction in fuel costs, and electric vehicles increase that, as well as not having an internal combustion engine or transmission. Overall maintenance costs for those vehicles are about a 60% reduction over current vehicles. Environmentally, we're looking at about a 40% reduction for alternative fuel vehicles in greenhouse gas emissions, and of course, electric vehicles are effectively a zero-emission vehicle. From the social aspect, and of course, maintaining Tempe is one of the leaders in the valley in innovation and technology as well, but also stewardship of our assets and our resources. Biggest challenges we have for alternative fuels is infrastructure, but more importantly, the actual maintenance of the, or the maintenance facility themselves require special requirements for the vehicles if they have a CNG coming into the vehicle, into the building. CNG actually is lighter than air, so the CNG raises instead of falling to the ground and get trapped inside the building and present some potential dangers there. It's just a lot of fire code, a lot of sensors needed, a lot of evacuation systems and so forth. Moving on to electric vehicles, so we have a sustainability objective for fleet, which is reduce emissions, fuel and maintenance costs by reducing the use of petroleum. We've only been in the electric vehicle field for about two and a half years. We bought our first electric vehicle in 2015, which was a plug-in hybrid, and the last two years, we've been able to increase our fleet to 2%. We've got 11 plug-in vehicles and three plug-in hybrid vehicles, and currently, we have 16 charging stations with four more being built as we speak at the police department on Apache. We couldn't have done this without the help of a lot of different areas. We've been doing this completely out of our operating budget, not out of capital cost, and we've been, with the help of our Water Utilities Division, with our solid waste section, police department, and also facilities, and we couldn't have done it without them. There's been some small rebates with some of the power utilities, SRP and APS, a little bit more on that as well. The biggest challenge for electric vehicles is the charging station infrastructure. Basically, you need one charger for each vehicle based on the operations that we have with our city. We don't have the available availability to have several vehicles share a charger because everybody needs to charge after their work shift. The charging infrastructure is going to take a lot of, lot of charging, a lot of planning, a lot of engineering, to find out where we have the capabilities, where we need to improve capabilities or increase capacity, because each charging station takes about a 40-amp circuit, which is a large, large circuit. Also, the challenges are for us for our operations and fleet, which is training our technicians. Since there's no internal combustion engine, we're looking at completely different technology, so we need to train all of our employees to be able to work on these vehicles as well. So moving forward, our electric, our internal goal for electric and fuel vehicles, back in 2014, we were trying to reach 35% alternative fuel or electric vehicles by 2020, and by 2030, we'd like to be at 60%. We haven't quite reached that, so we're going to, we're going to take a new look at our, at our 2020 goal, and then we'll give the council an opportunity to actually look at that goal and give us some advice or adopt a goal of moving to 2020 and 2030. So where are we going to be and where do we want to be moving forward? So we've got planning studies that need to happen, especially for electric vehicles. So we're looking to have some sort of expertise come in and look at the city as a totality in all the buildings that we have, where our vehicles are parked, and where we can actually put some of the charging stations that we have. We're looking at partnerships with some of our electric utilities. So SRP and APS, right now, only rebates are out there, but moving forward, we're looking for some expansion and some large-scale adaptation of hundreds of actual charging units and some of the partnerships they can help. So right now, we're only at our first stage of the five stages that we're looking at for 2030, but we're, we're getting to the point now where we're going to make, we're reaching the point where we need to make some serious improvements and advancements, and we're going to need some help to do that. So with that, I'll pass it over to Brayden.
Thanks, Kevin. So fleet's going to be a major component of our climate action plan moving forward. It's exciting to see the steps that are being taken to diversify our fuel use, make investments in clean fuel, and help support the transition to a clean energy economy.
Yes, Councilmember Kiwi.
Just a quick one, Kevin. It's so great to see this presentation. It's, I think, the first time we've had before council, a presentation about alt-fuel diversification. So it's amazing. I just want to ask you, I know that First Transit has their own fleet, and they have similar goals towards electrification and alt-fuels?
Yeah, the Transit, I, we are completely separate from Transit. I do know that they are, they have made huge strides. In fact, I believe they only have about nine units that are not alternative fuels right now, and I know they have hundreds of the buses and also the staff vehicles there as well.
They're mostly CNG?
CNG, yes.
Yeah, and then also, I assume in the planning, you'll be taking into account autonomous vehicles, looking into the future and whatever fuel they're, whatever fuels them, but that will be a part of that.
My personal feeling is definitely autonomous vehicles are the future and they're coming. We're going to, we're kind of taking a sit-and-wait stance to find out how the technology progresses, and we're, it's close, but we're going to be, we're going to be cautious about moving into that field, make sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Or actually?
I'm going to turn it to Ms. Kuiper for an update on the election.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Brigida Kuiper, city clerk, and I'm here to provide another update on the March 13th City of Tempe ballot by mail election. Registered voters should have received their ballot in the mail. It comes in a yellow envelope, looks something like this. Just shy of 83,000 were mailed on February 14th. We have various resources to assist voters, one being the checklist that is displayed on the screen there, and this was developed jointly by Maricopa County Elections and city staff. If you can click to the second image, please. If a voter would like to check the status of their ballot, if you can see the red frame there, they can always check the status of their ballot on ballotstatus.maricopa.vote as outlined in the flyer. In addition, at the bottom of the flyer, it's probably a little too small to read, but there are instructions if you would like to sign up for either email or text alerts regarding your mail. The ballot centers, Maricopa County ballot centers opened on February 14th. There are three, two located, and their offices in Phoenix, one in Mesa. The two Tempe locations, which will be at the library and city hall, will open on March 3rd, and they're open through Election Day, including weekends. The hours of operation do vary, so we encourage individuals to check the city's website at As I mentioned, ballot centers are open on Election Day. They're open from 6:00 a.m. in the morning to 7:00 p.m. at night. Those are the same hours as a polling place. Any person in line at 7:00 p.m. will be allowed to vote. At the ballot center, individuals can do three things. They can request a replacement ballot, they can drop off their voted ballot, or they can vote in person. As a reminder, ballots need to be received by the Maricopa County Elections Department or a ballot center by 7:00 on Election Day, March 13th. If a voter intends to return their ballot by mail, it is recommended that the ballot be mailed no later than March 7th, and the information I just referred to is all on that flyer, and we have copies of the flyer in the back, both in English and Spanish. With that, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove any public hearing items for separate consideration. The public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public hearing item, could you please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, and please hand it to our deputy city clerk, and then I'll call your name when it's your turn for public comment. The miss, the consent agenda is as follows. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A7, awards, bids, and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B2, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C13. Again, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item, and it can be removed by a member of the public for, for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item moved, could you please get my attention? Say nothing. I'll close that portion. Anyone from the council? Yes, Councilmember Shpire.
Item 5C1, please.
C what? Councilman Granville.
Item 5B1.
5B1. All right. So is there a motion for the consent agenda as read with the exception of 5B1 and 5C1? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Council, or Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is item, we're going to list, item 5B1 is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Floresco Services for area and path lighting, maintenance, and repairs. Councilman Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the contract renewal for the company that is responsible for going around and checking all of our path lighting, whether it be on the Town Lake, along our multi-use paths, and all the various areas, and part of that agreement is that they would keep all of those lights in working and functioning condition. As I found when I got complaints after Iron Man, there were 70, 80 lights that were out at Town Lake. Our staff has been great. As soon as I called 311, they immediately started on the work, and so I don't put the fault necessarily on staff at all, but on the company whose job it actually is to proactively go out and make sure that our residents are safe when they're around Town Lake, or when they're at parks or multi-use paths. The thing I would like to see is maybe us to take a pause just to give staff time to put into this agreement some sort of termination clause in the event they don't meet a minimum on light capacity. It seems to me that if somebody's got 5% or 8% or 10% of the lights out, given the safety issues involved, that should be grounds for terminating a contract relating to our parks and our lighting. So I don't want to say no to this, but I think it would be appropriate to maybe give staff a couple more weeks to change the language in this and see if the vendor's amenable to that, saying that, look, we're going to go around every month or every quarter, and if we find more than 2% or 3% of the lights out, we might not terminate your contract, but that at the very least gives us the grounds to immediately terminate your contract. And so then, they will be responsible for proactively going out and making sure that they're doing the very thing that they're contracted to do.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, Mayor, and I just wanted to hear from Mr. Green, just the fact of, is it something we can do here at the DIAS to do that? Because if they're going through a bidding process, and if the contracts are already laid out to what the parameters are, and we awarded, or we went through the process, can we do the change up here? And does that go to a rebid? And my other question is, how many people bidded for this light job? Bidded?
I don't even think that's a word. All right.
Yes.
Green?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we do have, this is the last year that we've been renewing the contract, and if, and if there is some concern regarding the performance of this contractor, we would, we could certainly do a short-term extension to have some discussions with that company to address the issues that Councilmember Granville has, has referenced, and, and see if we can incorporate that in. There have been some noted issues on performance, and there have been communications with the company. So, you know, we do feel that we've reached some, some communications with them to improve. Councilmember Navarro, on the, on the bidder, I can't remember the number of bidders that we had on this project. We certainly can look at that and come back to it. I believe we had some competition on this, so it's, I think there's a market for these services, and we can provide that.
Shall we?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just want to provide a little bit of clarification about the services regarding checking the lights. There is that provision in the contract. However, we do not have Floresco do that currently. Our staff, at least on the path lighting on a quarterly basis, goes out and checks the lights. We have found that to be a little more economical than using, using this provision at this time. So we then contact Floresco to change out the lights. So I wouldn't want them to be penalized for something they're not currently doing. We are working on a more robust system to allow us to check those more frequently, but they are not responsible for that at this time.
Okay. That's right. Vice Mayor?
So I guess I would, if they're going to, it's going to go up for a rebid again then in this next year. So those are some, maybe some stipulations we can put in the, the new bid as it goes out and some of the parameters that we're talking about.
It was economically, we're doing it ourselves.
Well, if we decide we want to, I mean, based on the fact if that creates more value for some reason, but if it does increase the price, I think you got to get into consideration too, right? I mean, that's probably part of the process, so.
Yes, I would think that we would continue to include that provision as we bid it. If we find that it's more economical for the company, whoever's awarded the contract, to do that for us, then certainly we would take advantage of that.
Okay. Councilman Granville?
Yes, and it's certainly possible that I was confused, which, which it happens, for sure, often. The, thank you. So if I understand what you're saying correctly, is part of their agreement with us is that they would go and search out and change the light bulb, or see what light bulbs were burnt out. However, there was a fee for them doing that, and so we didn't exercise that part of the contract, opting to do that internally ourselves?
That is correct.
Okay, then I actually have more comfort voting on this, knowing that, that it wasn't them down on the job. And you feel comfortable now that internally, we've got this handled?
I would say going forward, we are establishing the procedures to make sure that we are checking them more frequently. It's on a quarterly basis, so there could be an example where we check it, we identify, and then it goes for a few months without, obviously, having some money.
Sure. If that's the case, Mayor, then I'm happy to move forward.
Does that motion?
I move to approve item 5B1.
Mayor Granville, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kiwi. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item is item 5C1. It's to adopt a resolution authorizing a mayor who's designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Board of Regents for, and on behalf of Arizona State University and the city of Tempe Police Department to fund research to be formed, to be performed by Arizona State University related to the Bureau of Justice Assistance Strategies for Policing, Innovation Grant, and de-escalating training for officers. Councilmember Shpire?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't normally pull things off the consent calendar. In fact, I don't know if I ever have since I've been on the council, but I wanted to pull this one off because I think it deserves some notice. This is a really great partnership. Our police department has this, you know, $700,000 Bureau of Justice Assistance grant that we're now going to be partnering with ASU to do some research on de-escalation of violence. It's just really exciting, innovative work that our police department is doing, and I, and I love that they want to partner with our neighboring research institution to get great data on this, to improve our training. And I just wanted to bring some recognition to this item, since it was on the consent calendar and it wasn't otherwise going to be talked about, I just wanted to point out what I think, what a great partnership I think this is, and how exciting it is that our, our department and under, under Chief Moyer's leadership is, is doing incredible work, and I know Brenda Urns behind this and greatly appreciate her work on it as well. And with that, I want to move approval of item 5C1.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shpire, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries seven to zero. Next is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard tonight, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. 6A1 is to hold a public hearing for a time extension request for a condition of approval related to the planned area development overlay for 707 South Forest located at 707 South Forest Avenue. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham. Now, yes?
Good evening, Mayor.
I just wanted to, okay, never mind. I'll wait. Go ahead, Ms. Wallace.
Okay. Good evening. My name is, for your records, my name is Manjula Vazlaf from Gamage &amp; Burnham. I can't wait to make my presentation, if you wanted to say something, Mr. Mayor, or have Chad say something.
Now, I, the only comment is, you know, this is just the first public hearing, so.
Well, I think it's actually-
No, no, actually, I take that back. It's an extension.
This is just a-
So, I just want to list what, what the, what the opportunities are for the council on this item. The council can, we can approve a time extension of the condition of approval, or we can remove the condition of approval regarding the time to obtain a permit, or we could schedule a future public hearing to cause the property to revert to its former zoning classification, the effect of which is to remove the PAD overlay. So that's some of the options. Would the staff like to make any comments on this? Any comments from the council? Mayor and council, I'm looking at extending to December 31st, 2020. Yes, Chad, Orion, sorry.
Our police department has this, you know, $700,000 Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant that we're now going to be partnering with ASU to do some research on de-escalation of violence. It's just really exciting, innovative work that our police department is doing, and I love that they want to partner with our neighboring research institution to get great data on this, to improve our training. And I just wanted to bring some recognition to this item, since it was on the consent calendar and it wasn't otherwise going to be talked about. I just wanted to point out what I think, what a great partnership I think this is, and how exciting it is that our department and under Chief Moyer's leadership is doing incredible work. And I know Brenda Urns behind this, and greatly appreciate her work on it as well. And with that, I want to move approval of item 5C1.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries seven to zero. Next is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard tonight, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. 6A1 is to hold a public hearing for a time extension request for a condition of approval related to the planned area development overlay for 707 South Forest located at 707 South Forest Avenue. The applicant is Gamish in Burnham. Now, yes?
Good evening, Mayor.
I just wanted to, okay, never mind, I'll wait. Go ahead, Ms. Wise.
Okay. Good evening. My name is, for your records, my name is Manjula Vaz, law firm of Gamish in Burnham. I can wait to make my presentation, if you wanted to. Say something, Mr. Mayor, or have Chad say something.
Now, the only comment is, you know, this is just the first public hearing, so.
Well, I think it's actually.
No, no, actually, I take that back. It's an extension.
This is just a, and a request for time extension.
I just want to list what the opportunities are for the council on this item. The council can, we can approve a time extension of the condition of approval, or we can remove the condition of approval regarding the time to obtain a permit, or we could schedule a future public hearing to cause the property to revert to its former zoning classification, the effect of which is to remove the PAD overlay. So that's some of the options. Would the staff like to make any comments on this? Any comments from the council?
Mayor and council, I'll.
Looking at extending to December 31, 2020. Yes, Chad, Orion, sorry.
Mayor and council, I'll just say that we're in agreement with the applicant's request for a time extension to a date certain, which is December 31, 2020.
Vice Mayor Adona Savage?
So, Ryan, I know in the past when we've done our extensions, I think the major, the length that we've normally approved is a year, so tell me why you believe this one would exceed that time limit?
We know the applicant had made strides to go through a formal process the last go around. It took some time to go through it. We're actually prepared to go to a hearing process. The applicant has represented the developers at that time, decided to withdraw their request, and we knew that length of the time needed, necessary to go through those processes and procedures is probably going to take them that time to then acquire a new development team to bring another package for you for reconsideration, and I think it'll take 12 to 18 months probably to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I could add to that?
Ms. Wise?
One of the reasons we asked for two years is, we originally, as Ryan stated, started moving forward on a PAD, as you may all remember and seen, for sale residential, and we are strong and committed to that project, but the market was not fully there. Now we're moving to, Spike owns, as you know, both sites, moving to Sixth and College, which is on your agenda here in a couple of minutes, and so it'll probably take us, you know, two years to get kind of Sixth and College off the ground, and then we'll move back to Seventh and Forest. At the same time, we want to give the tenants who are in Seventh and Forest long-term leases, we're adding more tenants there. We have grooming humans and some other people. When the union moves out, we're going to put in some restaurants, so it'll give us time to work on Sixth and College for a couple of years, and then go back when we think the market's there to build residential, you know, residential hotel, we think it's residential. So we'd like to extend the PAD for the height, as we, as you have a letter from me, not, does that, that does not include the site plan or the bedrooms, so we're not going to build student housing. You know, we're committed to building, you know, residential project and hopefully for sale.
Councilman Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Wise, you know, you and I had talked before about that, my sort of strong dislike for time extensions for PADS, but in this case, it's a little bit different because I think you still have tenants there, and we talked about your desire to keep those tenants there. Can you just talk about what you've done to maybe put my mind at rest that this isn't going to go the way of the property just south of here, where everyone's going to get booted, and we're going to build tomorrow, and two years goes by, and three years goes by, and?
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Granville, I think you've seen, first of all, you know the tenants that have been there, you've seen several projects come through on the site, and through that time, and we have never done, we've not moved the tenants. I mean, this site has gone through a couple of PADS, but, you know, you certainly know Spike, and Spike's committed to downtown, we're all committed to downtown. We are currently working through, as we described to you, the leases. Everybody who wants to stay is getting extended leases, working with our tenants and trying to get other restaurants there. The union's going to eventually move out, the former Orange Table site, going to put a restaurant there, and I think we're trying to make sure the mom and pops thrive while we can, until the property is ready. And I think, you know, we've shown by actions over a couple of years, we've continued to extend their leases until we're ready to move.
Councilman Granville?
A follow-up, yeah, and we talked about that, but I thought we also talked about me getting some paperwork before this meeting.
You will, yes, and I just talked to Spike about it. Mr. Mayor, can Spike come down here? We can, we're still working on some leases. Spike was out, and we are happy to give you leases to show you what we're doing, and I'm certainly happy to have Spike come down here and talk about his leases, but I don't want a piece of paper with me, but we will. But I can tell, you know, the tenants.
I don't want to put you on the spot, I just, I know it's one of the things that we talked about.
Well, we did, yes.
And so, you know, I just, I mean, I'm going to trust you on this one, but I, in the next couple of days, I for sure would like to see, I don't need to know the names of the tenants, I don't want to get into proprietary information, but I do want to have some assurances that those viable businesses aren't going to be booted, because development's going to happen tomorrow circa, everyone south of their, you know, PS, development didn't happen tomorrow.
Yes, we understand your concern, and I think, yes, we will drop off some leases.
Vice Mayor Adona Savage?
I was going to move approval of item 6A1.
With what?
The extension.
The extension.
With the time recommended, December 31, 2020.
Second. Okay, there's a motion to approve the extension to December 31, 2020, and there's a second by Councilmember Shapiro. You know, the comment, wait, before we do that, this is a public hearing item. Is there any, I believe it is, yeah, it is. Is there anyone in your audience wishing to address us under item 6A1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, there hasn't been a motion in a second? Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item is item 6A2, is approve a single solicitation cooperation among the City of Tempe, Tempe Elementary School District, and Kyrene School District, and Tempe Union High School District for a volume discount for one-year contract renewals with Supreme Oil Company and Western Refining Wholesale for the purchase of vehicle, equipment, fuels, and diesel exhausted, exhaust fluid. Is there any comments or discussion from council? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Hey, I just want to give a shout out to Michael Green, because, Michael Green, this is something that happened, I don't even know how long ago it was, when we actually sat down with the school districts, and I just want to thank you for keeping the collaboration working together. I mean, I think anytime that we can work together and hopefully save money, it's always a win-win for everybody, so thank you for your work to continue to make it happen.
There you go. Even got a pat on the back. All right, this is not a public hearing item, is there a motion, item 6A2?
Move approved.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adona Savage, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. That motion carries seven to zero. Next item is item 6A3, is to approve a reimbursement to Valley Metro to construct a water line and sanitary sewer line improvements on University Drive as part of the Tempe Streetcar Project. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A3? Seeing none, is there a motion, item 6A3?
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote. That motion carries seven to zero. Next item under section is 6A4, is to adopt a resolution authorizing a mayor to execute the subcontract award agreement between the Arizona Department of Public Safety, Victim of Crimes Act, and Victims Assistance Grant Program, and the City of Tempe to accept the disbursement of federal grants for the provision of CARE-7 victim services. Is there any comments or discussion from council on item 6A4? If there's not, is there a motion? It's been, yes?
I just want to salute Kristen Charlo in the back and Naomi Farrell for getting this amazing grant, and among the things that we'll be adding to CARE-7 is another van, another mobile van, and a counselor, so much more, but it's amazing that you brought in $1.92 million, and that our cost share are the volunteer services of our community. So that's great, that our cost share isn't actually in cash, but in the hard work of our residents, so just a salute to you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item 6A4?
Some of them.
Moved by Vice Mayor Adona Savage, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, thanks again, staff, for their great work. Next section of the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, and no votes will be taken. The second hearings and votes of these items are scheduled for March 8, 2018. Orders and items for introduction and first hearing, section, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopted ordinance for a planned area development overlay and development plan review for a new two, a new 22-story building containing hotel with 186 rooms, 60 dwelling units, which is going to be condominiums, and commercial for the Hayden located at 580 South College Avenue. The applicant is Gamish of Burnham. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for March 8, 2018. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Mr. Mayor remembers the council. I can make a brief presentation tonight, Adam is here.
Yeah, might as well.
And then I will make a brief presentation, and then we can have, I can answer some questions.
Perfect, thank you.
I need a little. This site is for the Hayden, this site is actually a partnership between, the entity, here, for the record, my name is Manjula Vaz, sorry, law firm of Gamish in Burnham.
That's who you are.
I, I'm sure you're stunned. And here tonight, representing Sixth Street Hotel Partners. Sixth Street Hotel Partners is a partnership between CFT Ventures and McDonald Development Corporation. Our request tonight is to do a planned area overlay to establish site-specific development standards, and a DPR for a hotel and a condo. This is the site here located at corner, northeast corner, or northwest corner of South Sixth Street and College, I think you've seen it. We are really excited by this project. One thing we're trying to do is develop a really strong streetscape, let me show you, you know what it looks like. Site is currently zone CC, we're going to do it CCPAD. This site has a mixed use, land use, and high density, residential density, and we are, actually, we have talked about, and the design incorporates the Character III area design guidelines, place-making principles, and we'll see, as Adam's going to walk you through a little bit of the design in terms of streetscape, and some diversity of product. One thing Character Area III talks about is diversity of product, which we're bringing both hotel and some for-sale condos that, up to 60 condos, what we anticipate will probably be something, something around 40 to 50 condos, but we'll see as the market develops. So what I want to do is, talk here, I'm going to give you a little bit of a brief story of the hotel. It's 22 stories, 271 feet, it's going to have 174 hotel rooms and 12 hotel suites. We will have, as I mentioned, up to 62-bedroom condo residences, those, that is how the parking is calculated. We are, those condos may be bigger or smaller as we kind of work through, they're going to be kind of delivered in a gray shell, and residents will be able to kind of customize their own condos, so much the way the Orchid House works. We have shared hotel and residential lobby, kind of cafe space, hotel meeting space. I'm going to have Adam kind of walk you through this, it's a pretty cool design that I know some of you have seen, we're happy to show it to the public. We have 144 parking spaces, and the four-level parking structure, and 86 bike spaces for 71 are required. So as, also, as you know, and we talked to some of you, our hotel will be under the Unbound Collection by Hyatt. The Unbound Collection is kind of a soft luxury lifestyle brand. That's a brand that includes Royal Palms, which I think you're more of kind of a resort feel, and you'll see that through our design. The person who will probably stay at this hotel is someone who is a business traveler, but kind of a business pleasure traveler, so really excited, we think it'll be a different mix of hotel and the market. So with that, I'm going to let Adam talk a little bit about the hotel on the way out, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Hi, my name is Adam Valente, I'm with Davis, we're the architect on the project. As Manjula said, very excited about this project, and the first floor is the, you know, we're on College Avenue, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down there, so we really want to engage that environment, so we have our shared lobby with both the hotel and the condominiums in that northeast corner of the plan, really high ceiling heights, a lot of glass, you can see right into the first floor, and then on the southeast corner is a cafe, and that'll have outdoor patio space, there'll be some covered dining, so again, really trying to engage the public as they're moving up and down College Avenue and around Sixth Street. The service for the building happens more on Sixth Street, and then the entrance to the garage is there also. So above the first floor, we have four floors of parking, and then we get to the hotel, and there's 10 floors for the hotel, the first of which is a meeting floor, it's going to be 4,000 square foot meeting space there, so that can accommodate pretty good-sized groups, and then it could also be broken down into smaller meetings and, you know, available for any type of smaller function. Then you have nine floors of hotel rooms, that's the 186 rooms, 174 standard kind of rooms, and then there's 12 suites. Above that, six floors of condos, right now it's entitled for 60 condo units, but again, that's a number that we're working on, we're starting to look at the market and what's, what's available, and what the market demands, so that number will probably come down from there. And then above those condos, we have an amenity deck, that is also a fitness area, there's a pool on the roof, there's a lounge, this kind of seating outdoor patio area, so again, that's, you're going to be able to take advantage of the views of a mountain to the north, actually 360-degree views up there, it's pretty spectacular. The elevations, the idea again is that ground floor is wide open, you're going to see the life, a lot of glass, very kind of diaphanous, kind of inside-outside experience. The ground floor has a little bit of a grotto area that's kind of necessary for fire access and stuff like that, but we thought that'd be a good opportunity to, you know, have a nice kind of cool desert outdoor meeting space. The garage is comprised of, it's kind of a grid, metal grid with perforated metal, it helps screen the cars, and kind of doesn't look like a garage. Once you get into that art box, that is a reinterpretation of Salt River topography, so it is actually a section of the Salt River, and, you know, trying to tap into the Hayden, the name of the hotel, being in Tempe, that's why, you know, the Salt River is why Tempe is here, and where it's located. Above that is the hotel, and then we get a rain screen, porcelain tile for the kind of main body of the building, and then there's the glassy corners. As you move up to the condos, then you get some balconies, again, these are kind of high-end condos, so those balconies are pretty fantastic views, glass handrails, so the idea again is that that grid starts to break down as you move up through the building and get a little bit more above the ground plane. We have that superframe that goes over the top of the building, that helps kind of break down the overall mass of that, and gives you one clean vertical line that goes to the top, help draw your eye up and make the most of that verticality.
This is just some extra perspectives, Adam, if you want to walk through the materials a little bit?
Sure, that's, it's a lot of metal, a lot of glass, and then there's that porcelain tile, which is going to be on the hotel portion, and again, it's a rain screen, so it's kind of one of our sustainable things that we're doing, that's going to allow air to kind of flow and keep that exterior wall a little bit cooler, it's very effective in the desert. So the glass colors. And this, this is that ground floor, it's the landscape plan on the northeast side of the plan, you can see that green wall, so that, again, that's like Grotto I was talking about, it's going to be more of a sculpture, kind of a succulent garden, and again, that's right off the lobby, a lot of glass, so you get that inside-outside lifestyle. That's the roof terrace, we're going to have landscaping around the perimeter, you know, rooftop planters, there's shade, there's, again, that lounge area, so it'd be just a fantastic place to, for the residents and for the hotel guests.
Well, that's a brief presentation, Adam and I, or anybody else in our team, are happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Adona Savage?
Great, thank you guys very much. I got a couple of questions. I mean, first and foremost, the one thing you said, you were a little uncertain about the condos, about the number of condos, which I get, because I think if some people want a larger condo, maybe that would reduce the size, but if at the end, instead of going from 60 condos, maybe you're down to 30, does that mean the height of the building will come down?
No, the units, that's what we're looking at now, is how big those units are going to be. The initial plans that we submitted to cities shows them demise as two-bedroom units, and that's what the parking is based on. There's still going to be two-bedroom units, but there may be larger two-bedroom units.
Right, but you said you're not really sure what the market's going to bear, so if, so you're saying that you're going to do the two-bedroom units, if that's not what the demand is?
Right now, we're looking at who the market is, and we think that they still are the two-bedroom customer, but they want a larger two-bedroom. Initially, they were, I think, in the 850 range, so we're looking at things that are much larger than that.
So there's still going to be, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, there's still going to be six floors of condo, there just may be, instead of six, there's just going to be four condos instead of?
So what I'm guessing, what I'm getting at is, one, of course, I'd like to see it a little bit lower, because I think it's a little high, but secondly is, I wouldn't want us to lose, let the condo space, and all of a sudden, the hotel approaches on a, on a floor or two. I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah, that's, again, it's a partnership, we saw the initial slide, McDonald Development and CTF Ventures. The hotel, they have a contract stipulation, you know, understanding that that's how the hotel and the condos will be broken up.
Right, okay. And then another thing you mentioned, Adam, is about the interaction and the engagement of the public around the streetscape piece around the bottom, which to me is really important, and the way that you're going to be able to do that. I mean, you showed some things, but there's not really a lot of specifics in there, so maybe between now and then the next time you come back, it would be kind of really good to see what that looks like. I mean, I know you see a lot of those big commercial doors that roll up, and creates that indoor-outdoor experience that you had mentioned. I think it's just kind of really going to be important that we, you nail that, and make sure that's, you know, really a pleasant experience for everybody, whether they're there enjoying it, or they're walking by and maybe want to come in, so they feel like they're part of it.
Yeah, and that's the cafe, you know, we're still working through that with the final restaurateur is going to be, but the idea is that that cafe, that kitchen is going to be an open kitchen, again, so it's just a very open experience, you're going to see that through the glass, the ceiling heights in there are going to be 16 feet, so it's, again, very wide open, maybe more of a visual connection than the inside-outside.
Okay, and then lastly, my last piece would be.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
Just in terms of, just 30 seconds of, one of the plans we had for college is, we're trying to make sure that it's a full, so we'll show you a better picture, it's a full connection along college, we're taking away the curb cuts, I mean, except for drop-off in terms of vehicular access on college, so it does become a straight pedestrian street, and the corner, which I, we agree with you. And the corner, which I, we agree with you, is the most important at Sixth and College, becomes more like the way Postino and Snooze work. So that connection can work, can grow, and certainly ways CAC works. So you'll see people sitting on the corner and through the dining patio in the cafe as people pour out onto college to sit there and enjoy it. That's what Adam's talking about, in terms, even with the glass, let people see inside and outside. So you'll see more of that. That's what is what we're trying to do. So college looks more consistent in terms of both landscaping, flowers, and people.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's going to be really important and essential, especially around that corner because that could be a really positive thing for the area. And my next thing is not necessarily about design, but more about operations when it comes to the employees that are going to be working here. And because we're so close to light rail, is there any opportunity to really engage in some education and maybe offer transit passes to the employees? Because, I mean, obviously, we know that traffic in downtown is a little tight, and we're working on that and doing things to improve it. But there is, is there a way that you guys can see some flexibility to encourage the employees to use alternative modes of transportation? And, you know, maybe a park-and-ride, which I find sometimes a lot of people just don't know or are comfortable with. And if there's something that we can do to kind of help make that happen, I think that would be really important to try to encourage people that are going to be working there for a long period of time to get out of their cars.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, we agree with you. I mean, we're happy to work with people, put a stipulation on. I think we're, you know, as many employers do, you know, give metro passes, give bus passes. But you and I both know it's not just giving the passes.
I get it. You can give it. You can totally give it, but it doesn't mean that they're going to use it. So I would love to see if you guys could, you know, be creative and think of some ideas that you think might create some incentives for people to actually use the light rail or bike or whatever it may be that they're comfortable with, but not necessarily to have to bring their cars in the downtown area. Not saying that they can't, because, I mean, I like to drive my car, so I get it. But I think there's a lot of really great opportunities, and I think that's one thing that we're kind of missing the boat on. So if you guys could really set the tone, I think that would be a really positive thing.
Okay. No, we agree with you. And we'll bring you back and give you some ideas. We'll talk to hospitality management company and come back with ideas.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to follow up on the conversation we had when I met with you regarding, I think, some of the, to the point of transportation, truly multimodal, encouraging employees to use public transportation. Is there a way, I know it's, I believe it's overparked, you mentioned. Is there something we can work with, with all of you to eliminate maybe one row of the parking, from the parking garage? I think that's equivalent to how many spaces were overparked in there?
About thirty-three, thirty-five.
And the reason why I'm saying... Well, one, because then it helps encourage additional opportunities because it just helps with the overall TOD, transportation overlay district, with the modeling that we're looking at throughout the city. And as part of the urban core plan that we're going to be, that we're underway, and we have a meeting next week, some of the biggest challenges we're going to face in this area is as we develop projects such as this, some of the other biggest challenges are going to be how we move around. I mean, we're experiencing that on Real Salado with some of this other development that's coming down. It's one of the opportunities that we're really going to have to look at, and I would hope we can help encourage the partners, like yourself, as we go forward through a process like that. If it's going to be overparked, if there's a way, if there's other public spaces around here that would accommodate, your, the restaurant aspect or some of the patio, the cafe that you have, but also encourage multimodal, bike share, white rail, streetcar, and what have you, in the orbit system and the buses. I think that's an opportunity to help continue the vision that we're looking at in the urban core. Councilman Navarro, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree. I understand the, you know, obviously, we're in the downtown area. We want to get people out of their cars, so to speak. One of the things that we did talk about, though, as it is, as it is right now, if it is underparked, there is still a potential of storage or possibly using spaces as storage for the units that have condos, which I could really see as a possibility, if that is a possibility still. The other thing is, we're going to be losing parking at the ASU behind the north side, and especially if the development on the lake continues, that we lose more parking around that area. So I kind of almost would like to wait what happens as things progress. But if there's a plan to where we don't need that, what are the alternatives uses of maybe a row or whatever that might be?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, councilman Navarro's point. I think as we talked to all of you, we had, we totally understand and agree the parking, in the parking situation and whether, we talked a little bit about how we would refocus the garage in the future. I mean, maybe we can think about a stipulation that allows us some flexibility to work with the staff. I mean, we will park at code. You know, we can certainly talk to the staff and talk to you before our next hearing in terms of what to do about the parking. I mean, the parking, we understand, you know, works for now. We are certainly happy to look at, as we've talked about, looking at losing, you know, a floor of parking. And that still works for the hotel. We need to make sure we have spaces for the condos, but we're happy to look at that. As if, whatever, as long as there's a consensus, you know.
Councilwoman Granville.
Yeah, I would say...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, then you. Okay.
Well, I just want to talk about that really quick because I don't think I'm prepared to remove parking quite yet. I like the idea of what councilmember Navarro mentioned about being able to convert it into some other type of use. And the only reason is because this is something new and different that we've never done before, mix a hotel with residential. And so we may have some trends in regards to what we've seen with some multifamily other developments, but I think this will be a little bit different. So I really hate to undersell it and then find out that we made a mistake and you can't go back. So I'd rather leave it the way it is and then maybe utilize it to do something different in the future if it needed to be used for something different. But I'm not ready to eliminate a row or a whole floor of parking at this time. That's my opinion.
Councilwoman Granville.
Yeah, I was going to go with the same thing. I would say, do, you know, do what you always do, and that is sort of go around and chat with everybody. Get your read of what's the best thing. I would say for myself, far better to have the parking and then find out later that you don't need it, and you can use it as a place for carpool, pickups, for ride-share. You could cage it and make it a place for, you know, secure bike parking, like Key Fab Bike Parking. You could do, you know, Zip Cars. There's a million things in the way of flexibility, but it's so much easier to change that space than to find out you needed that space and to add it back in. So I would say, you know, just do your due diligence and maybe chat with everyone offline individually. But don't tell us what each one said.
Councilmember Keating.
Yes, I agree with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Granville on this. I think that we need more parking, not less, as general in downtown Tempe. So I would not be comfortable taking away parking at this point. I also, just to say, I have no problem with the height either, so I like the project.
Thank you. Thank you all. We'll come back and see you on March eighth.
All right. Next item is item 6B2, to introduce and hold the first public hearing adopted ordinance authorizing the sale of real property located at 101 South Perry Lane, the City of Tempe, to Corder Partners LLC, and authorizing the mayor's designee to execute all associated agreements, addendums, conveniences, and other related documents. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for March eighth, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Could you please get my attention? Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Is there, this is just the first public hearing? All right, we'll see none. Any comments from the council? Next item is item 6B3. This item, agenda item, has been removed at the request of the developer. The next item is ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item in this section is item 6C1, is to hold a second and final public hearing adopted ordinance authorizing the amendment of a portion of a thirty-foot-wide railroad spur easement located between two parcels at the intersection of McClintock Drive and Underpass and Union Pacific Railroads tracks. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C1? Could you please get my attention? See none. Close that portion. Any comments or discussion on item 6C1? Is there a motion on item 6C1? Moved by Vice Mayor Adama Savage, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote. That motion passes six to zero with Councilmember QB absent. Next item is item 6C2, is over the second and final public hearing adopted ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R1 PAD with a planned area development overlay and development plan review consisting of a new three-story, fifteen-unit, attached single-family development for the farmer-town homes located at 612 South Farmer Avenue. The applicant is Gamble to Burnham. Miss Burnham. I mean, Miss Burnham. Miss Vaz.
I only wish. Not with the person, just the money.
Miss Vaz.
Just kidding.
It was good humor.
Hey, hi. For the record, my name is Monch... I was kidding. For the record, my name is Monch LaVaz, live from Gamble to Burnham, two North Central, Phoenix, eight five zero zero four. I'm here tonight on behalf of Desert Viking. We talked a little bit about this. This project is, we decided, is a for-sale, fourteen-unit townhouse development. Our request tonight is to rezone from R3 multifamily to R1 single-family PAD to establish some site-specific development standards and do some site and landscape plans for the building elevations. The site is, you know, it's located at Seven Thousand Ufarmer. It's currently a vacant lot with two vacant houses on it. With existing site plan looks like. The, and then here's some surrounding housing that you've seen. I won't go through a lot of the plans. I just want to talk to you a little bit about the units and show you some design. Units are three-story livable units. We have kind of bottom floors garage and kind of a living room area. Then you have two bedrooms, or you come into the main area with the kitchen, and then two bedrooms with a flex space for home office. We have greater, we have thirty-one percent landscaping, twenty-five percent is required by the current R3 zoning. We have more, we have thirty-nine percent lot coverage. Thirty-three parking spaces, thirty are required. Councilmember Granville and I talked about some neighbors who are concerned about landscaping and parking. Well, we didn't get to, I didn't get to speak with them. I've sent them several emails and...
For what it's worth, Miss Vaz, he's never gotten back to me again either.
Okay, well. But I just wanted to, on the record, we are, we have more landscaping and parking than required. We are really excited about the site. Oh, one thing we did talk about, and I've talked to some members of TNT, we looked at the Character Area Three design guidelines in making this, and some of the things Character Area Three talked about is having diverse park, diverse housing, certainly for-sale housing, active pedestrian streetscapes, which is something that we worked through in this plan. I would say the neighbors and both the DRC really helped us kind of refine this plan and working with Character Area Three design guidelines that helped us a lot. So just to show you some, what we think, there are going to be some design renderings of this plan. We think it'll certainly start to more fill out farmer-town along Farmer. Really excited about it. Happy to answer any questions. We have patios in the front. I can go through the whole thing, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Caitlin's here, she can also answer questions. Good luck.
Yes, Councilwoman Granville.
I just have one question. This is an easy one, and I apologize I haven't asked you sooner. I'm always amazed by these sort of projects that have, you know, thirty parking spaces, but only three visitor parking spaces. It just, it means you really can't even have anyone to your house without them running out of parking. I assume that's to our code.
Yes, that's the code.
So we require for this many units, for all, we require three visitor parking spaces in total. Okay, it's just amazing. I don't know what to tell you. I'm not going to hold you accountable for something that's not. It's just amazing to me that in all of these units, we never expect two people to invite friends over at the same time.
Well, I think, you know, I won't get out, Brian can answer that. I would say that people can also travel to this side, much like the other side, by bike and, you know. There's a lot of ways to get to the site without getting to on a car.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment?
Yes.
Miss Vaz, I just want to say I really do appreciate the fact that this is going to be a for-sale housing project, and I think that, you know, we really need to continue to work on that balance. So I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to take the risk and to be able to do that because I think that's exactly what we need in that area. So thank you for that.
And just to echo that, because the last previous project and this one, both are for sale. And that's been the vision of this council, looking at more homeownership opportunities for our residents as well, also looking at the whole entire master plan. So it's a pretty good diverse mix. Vice, or Councilwoman Navarro.
Former Vice Mayor.
No, I just want to echo the same sentiments. And then one other question, and really, thank you for the, you know, the opportunity for homeowners to buy. That's outstanding. But with this project, was there a talk, and I maybe I just did not hear, but to do balcony or rooftop access?
We are, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Navarro, we, when we, we are, we were looking at rooftop access. We obviously have balconies. It may not work. We're still, there are some things we're still working on in terms of the site plan and design. And in fact, you'll see a little stipulation that to allow us to have forty feet, because from what we originally submitted, we're going to raise the floor-to-ceiling heights, so there'll be taller floor-to-ceiling heights. I don't know if rooftop access will work as well as it kind of works up Farmer, but we're still working through that. What we have tried to do is make bigger balconies. I can tell you about things we talked, we made larger balconies, kind of put more shading on the balconies, and we'll see how rooftop access goes.
Check it out.
We're going to check it out because I think it's cool. I'm with you.
Anyone else? I guess I didn't know that our city clerk is moonlighting as a model.
Move to approve item 6C2.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville, seconded by Vice Mayor Adama Savage. Please vote.
I give it to the clerk.
That motion carries six to zero. With Councilmember QB absent. Next item on our agenda is our current events and council announcements. Councilwoman Schiavone.
Thank you, Mayor. My third time bringing this up. Last chance to put it on your calendars for this Saturday. Arts in the Park, Mitchell Park Pilot Event, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Granville.
You know, there's a bunch of stuff going on, so I'll just mention one. Hopefully, I'm not stepping on any toes, and that's the Empty Bowls event in support of TCAA. It's going to be tomorrow at, here by the, by the city building, and Saturday at the usual spot by the library slash museum. I've picked up something every year there, and it doesn't match anything in my house, and I couldn't be prouder of them. They're all really well-done, and it's just for a great cause.
Vice Mayor Adama Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got a few things. First and foremost, as I think you mentioned earlier tonight, Valor on Eighth, which is something that we've been talking about. I barely had to go back and look, and Parrish reminded me, it's like literally four years when we actually started the discussion about trying to create a veterans' housing project. So I just, you know, was really thrilled and excited that this is here, and it's tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So if you are available, please come by. And just a great shout-out to everybody that's really been involved from the very beginning, from Naomi, from everybody in your department and everything that you guys done and staying true to it. I know you, I've got some other great news today, too. I don't know if that's something I should could share, so I won't. But just, just everybody that really... Sorry. But anyway, I just, I just got to tell you, it's just been a really great journey and a really persistent journey. So I'm really excited with all the partners from Gorman and Company to Save the Family and the City of Tempe and everything that we've been able to do to really be able to pull off a really successful, affordable housing project for veterans that have families. So thank you, everybody, for that, and I hope to see you all tomorrow at 11:00. And of course, you know, if you want to discover the science in Tempe, come on out Thursday, March first, at the Tempe Community Complex, over at the library, from 4:30 to 8:00. It's going to be great, and I want to give a shout-out to all the city departments that are participating. Thank you guys so very much for being a part of it, willing to showcase some of the things that you guys are doing that's related around STEAM. And I think it's a really great way to showcase some of the cool things that happen in the city of Tempe. So make sure it's free, family, fun event. Please come out, tell your friends and neighbors. It's going to be a good time on Thursday, March 1st. I know we're supposed to have a meeting here, but I'm not coming to the meeting, I'm going to this. It's going to be a lot more fun. Just saying that, Mayor. Okay. And then lastly, Hayden Ferry Days is also coming up, March 2nd to the 4th. So it's a three-day celebration. If you guys haven't had the opportunity to go before, it's just a really great way, I think, to honor the heritage and the history of the city of Tempe. And they do a lot of really great things from dinner to tours and just, just a recognition of what's happening in the history of Tempe. So I would get online, check it out, go to tempe.gov/haydenferydays and see if there's an event that you'd like to attend. I think you'd learn a lot. It'd be really great. So March 2nd through the 4th, and maybe we'll see you there. That's all I got, Mayor.
Councilwoman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just one little event coming up on February 3rd is Tempe Cares. They'll be doing the citywide community garden on March 3rd, starting at 8:00 AM. And always they're looking for volunteers, a great organization, part of a leadership program. They do a variety of different projects every year throughout our city, which are projects that, you know, are in high need, but obviously it costs a lot of money, and they help us with neighborhood housing parks, right-of-way walls, you name it. This year, they're going to be doing a, the community gardens citywide and at locations at Broadmoor Elementary School, Clark Park, Wilson Garden, I'm sorry, the Eltrason, Wilson Garden, Escalante Garden, in the center of habilitation for garden, I guess. So they'll be establishing those locations, and it's a great cause to get them out there. Thanks.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday is our second annual Tempe Young Professionals Spring Training Game with the mayor. Mayor Mitchell and myself will be there with a host of Tempe Young Professionals, and there are still tickets available if you're interested in coming. You can get those at tempeyp.com. Thank you.
I just want to echo Vice Mayor regarding the Valor on 8th, groundbreaking tomorrow as well as tomorrow night, City of Tempe Night for the women's basketball game at Wells Fargo Arena with Coach Charlie Turner Thorn. And then on Saturday, we've got a busy day on Saturday. I know some of the council members were participating in the Tempe Youth Local Government Day here at the council chambers. And then also, we have, as Councilmember Keating mentioned, you know, this Saturday is the opening game for spring training for the Angels. And then we have the City of Tempe charity game on Wednesday, the 28th next week, and spring training is in full force. Hope to see everyone out at the ballpark. And with that, I will conclude our comment section. And the next item on our agenda is our public appearances. There are no scheduled public speakers under scheduled public appearances tonight. Under unscheduled public appearances, we do have some cards. I do want to let everyone know that according to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, that the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters that are discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, it's three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited and violations. These rules may result in the removal from the council chambers. So under unscheduled public appearances, I do have some cards. I will start with Mr. Ginsburg, Bruce Ginsburg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to talk about House Bill 2333. I live in North Tempe. I'm here to speak about the bill, which would allow almost all homeowners throughout Arizona to post business signs and hours of business in front of their house. I've been on Marlboro Park Estate Board for almost 30 years, but I'm not here on their behalf. I'm talking on myself. I am not against people walking out of their houses, but against posting information in front of it. I will try and speak about this as much as time allows. The bill stipulates that a municipality or county cannot restrict business operations or require any license, permit, registration, variance, or prior approval to function. It prohibits a municipality or county to require a person to rezone the property for commercial use, obtain a business or any other license, install, equip the residence with sprinklers, fire sprinklers. The use of the residential will no longer be what it's supposed to be. Community watch blocks would no longer be of use. Co-compliance will not have the capability to enforce issues related to the department. They are shorthanded right now. Police services will have difficulty related to these issues. Codes within cities will have to be looked at for changes. Cities will have to look at codes relating to businesses and just accordingly. Communities that are private will have to look at issues relating to this. How can a home be labeled residential and business at the same time? Complaints will occur many more times than currently, so city services will be affected. Neighbors will no longer be neighbors because of the instruction of people outside of their neighborhood. People need to call the representatives at the state capitol. I am doing what I can relating to speaking to our Senate and House representatives. I've set up meetings on Monday with both Senate and House representatives for a meeting at 10:30 in the morning to discuss this bill. There's also a possibility, I would have the possibility, I was told, to be on the committee. But as yet to be determined, I urge everyone to call the representative of House and Senate to stop House Bill 2333 before major changes take place. As of late this afternoon, I talked to a gentleman named Darren Fisher, who's our community manager. He instructed me on a number of issues related to this bill, and there were some changes made prior to the bill, and the bill was pushed forward as of this afternoon, and it passed 36 to 20. So I urge the people to call the representatives and stop this bill because it's going to create havoc in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. If you would like, we can't address you right now, but if you give us a second, go through the rest of the meeting, we'll have a conversation with you.
Absolutely.
All right, next is Dr. Sylvia Herrera. Dr. Sylvia? Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sylvia Herrera, and I'm here on behalf of the residents of 2015 East University, the Tempe Mobile Home. And I'm here to express concern over the closure of mobile homes and residents, the displacement of residents in Tempe. The Tempe Mobile Home is just one of several mobile homes that have been closed within the last years or so. And so I hear that the city of Tempe is concerned and that affordable housing is a priority, yet that's not the message that's being sent with so many residents that are being displaced by the closure of mobile homes. The mobile homes along parks, along the Apache, were closed as the light rail moved forward in that area. Now we have the Tempe Mobile Home residents that are being told that they have to go elsewhere. On Saturday, there were many options presented to them as if they could qualify for many of these parks. A lot of the people that were there were from out of town. They were from Yuma, Tucson, and offered services and housing, but it's not any, any locations that were offered that were in Tempe. You're disrupting many of the families, and in fact, some of the families came from the other mobile homes along Apache. So it's just a continuation of displacement, and the priority is not there for affordable housing for these residents. I have an example of one of the flyers that was presented to them. Not only were they in Yuma, but it was for people that were 55 and over. And I think that the developer presented that option to, before you, or presented that as an option for people in the area. I'm here today to ask you to consider options where you would be willing to participate and integrate private development and, and the city of Tempe, along with the residents, to come up with a better solution to affordable housing. And we also sent a, an email to you, and I know that several of you have acknowledged receipt of that. But there are other cities that are facing similar situations, and I would urge you to look at those other cities to see how they're combining that effort so that the residents have affordable, have access to affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking at the speaker's cards. And after everyone's finished, we do have Mr. Heo here with the city deputy, we can help talk to you as well if you also need some, any additional assistance. Mr. Salvador Reza?
My name is Salvador Reza. I want to thank Mrs. Cubey, Lauren Cubey, for caring enough to go to that Saturday meeting along with Valerie. They saw the situation, and it frankly needs the council to direct staff to actually work directly with the, with the residents and with the Treehouse people and with the developer. Because what's going on is a lot of misinformation. A lot of people don't know what's going on. They, they promised in the world that the state is going to give them $1,000 and all that, but there's a lot of requisites for that to happen. And on top of that, there's frankly, I would say, fraud going on, where they actually hold the lien of the people there when they already paid it. They already paid the trailers, and they still have a lien on them. I guess once the city was involved, then they're moving away from it, and they're talking about giving clean title, but that's a crime, what's going on right there. And I think, I know that most cities, when they assign staff, things get done. When you don't assign staff, then we just come and complain to the council, and the council goes home, and then they might complain about it and all of that, but nothing gets resolved. So I urge the city council to assign staff to it, and on top of that, maybe to dedicate time so that you can have the Treehouse people, the developer, the different players that can help to do a clean transition, to get involved. And we really appreciate that if that can be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Jorge Roblera.
Hi, good night. I am from the same situation because we need help from yours, or we can have a meeting with a Treehouse owner and a person who's buying. Because I am one of the person who have a problem with a lien title. I finished my payment on 2040, and I tried to sell like five months ago, and when they explained about the lien. I went to the Treehouse, and they tell me I need to show up and sign some paper. When I be there, they give me the papers on blank, and I sign because I was waiting for my lien title. And then my boss tell me, I, one of the paper was a attorney, power attorney, and they say when I give all the power to them. And after that, I go back because my boss tell me, go and tell them, you can get a lawyer because you finished four years ago, you need to have your lien title. And I go back and I explain them, and I tell about the attorney, and when they be like, the lady tell me, I used to try to scare me. I say, no, I explain you, I need my title because my, my payment was four years ago, and you still have, I still have a lien. Then, can you give me my lien title? And then she said, next time. And then we have a meeting in the parking lot, and when I talk to her, she be mad, and she tell me, shut up, I told you, I have your lien title, you can go anytime when you want. I went last week, and I get my lien title, but it's because I talked to them about the lawyers. But the rest of the people, they have the same problem, and that's why we want to talk to them. Because now somebody say, they, they called them, and they say, you can come and pick up your, your title without lien, but why until now? Why four or five years after we finish the payment? Then it's something wrong, and that's why we want to talk to them. We need, or when we move, where is how they want to help us between one or two months when we went out? Because we have a family, we don't know about the children to the bus school, or where I sleeping for a month, or what I do with all my staff. I need stories or something, that's why we went. We need your help, then we can talk to these people, Treehouse and the buyer. Can you help us? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ruben Cosio.
I just have a short thing, you know, I appreciate to you guys, they already scared, you know, like, no scared, just fixing things, you know, so it's good for us, and I appreciate to you guys, I don't know how they hear about this, you know, but they taking care of a lot of stuff. If you guys keep, you know, pushing them, maybe we get a better, you know what I mean? So appreciate it to you guys, thanks.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? You may do so at this time if you give my attention. Yes, please, sir, come forward. State your name and place of residence for the record.
Your counsel, this is my second time that I'm here with you, and the first time then I came, then it was two weeks ago, I told you about my title, then it was, then it has a lien, and my house, and my trailer is already pay off. And thanks to you, Treehouse already contacted me and said that I can go there and to release the, my title, you know, the lien that it has. So I really thank you, you know, to, you know, for that intervention that you had, you know, with the, between, between us and Treehouse. And so now it's, I'm a little bit less worried, you know, to lose my trailer because with the lien, any payment, then I had, then I could be behind, they could took away my trailer, you know, if it's already pay off, it didn't make any sense. But now I'm, I'm, I'm a, have a peace of mind, you know, you know, just by knowing that I can have the release of my title. So I really thank you. But it's still, you know, we, we still have some problems to solve because some people, they still on the trailer, and if we have to move in 180 days, so what is going to happen with them, you know, with the debt, you know? They are going to request to be pay off before they are leaving, from where they are going to get 3,000, 4,000 to pay off the trailer in order to get the title. If they are going to say, you don't have the 3,000, we are going to take away your trailer, that's not fair because, you know, that's their home. So we really need your intervention, you know, to talk to them, you know, so we can have a meeting and discuss the problem. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? Could I get your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Juan Martinez.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to, yes, ma'am, please come forward. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name's Cindy Flores. I just want to say again, like they said before, thanks to Councilmember Cubey for going out on Saturday and being there with us, telling us to hear our situation. I just kind of wanted to state that, again, a lot of us are, like they said, we're moving, and they don't really have where we're going. A lot of the areas is out of here. But we're also concerned as well for all the children there. The local school there is Flora through elementary school. And I'm going to pass up this letter, is from the principal there, that she's also very concerned because they're going to lose a lot of students. There's quite a bit of families with their children are going to the school along, along with the previous mobile homes that have been closed in the area. Because of that, they've also lost even more students over the years as they've been closing these areas down. So not only it's a concern to them, but also, like I said, I think I said it last time, is that a lot of us grew up in this area. It's where all our friends are, and so it's kind of a big drastic change for all of us. And a lot of my neighbors have already stated, a lot of the information that we've been getting hasn't been completely, like, shared with us as well, along with selling our homes. When we owned them already, they didn't tell us. First, they were telling us, we have to sell it to our previous owners. They never really told us that we can sell it to outside till someone came on Saturday and explained kind of the law to us. We were all unaware, we were just know, we just knew what they were telling us, which wasn't completely everything. So a lot of us were going unaware, they're not explaining a lot of the paperwork, the legal work. Obviously, we can't, we don't really understand it too well, and it's not explained to us. A lot of us are Spanish speakers, and the papers are all in English. So that's another kind of effect that we can't understand it. But I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave this with you guys. Yeah. Thank you for...
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under unscheduled public appearances? You can do so. And I'll close that portion. If I could, Valerie, if you could send a Friday memo to us and update us on what's going on status-wise and what some of the next steps are that we can help and assist to the entire council, and then we can work with. And I don't know if there's a lead organizer, I don't know if it's Mr. Reza or... Valerie, no, Ms. Herrera? Value, no, Ms. Herrera. Ruby, right, Councilman Navarro.
No, I was going to say, I'm hoping staff is engaged on this. It sounds like we are, and Saturday went well. I know I talked to one of the representatives of the developer, and I expressed that this has to be done properly, right, with everybody knowing what's what. And I, he assured me, we'll still continue to work to find the best resolution possible. So I'm hoping that, you know, obviously, with us being involved and the developer willing, and I know the council is putting pressure on them, we're going to get some, you know, real traction.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Mitchell, members of the council, yeah, this is an issue that is very complex. It's of great concern to us. It's the second time we've been through this in the last two years. And actually, we have connected with a gentleman who is kind of a specialist in this whole trailer park closure. He helped us with Pony Acres two years ago, and he is engaged with us. We are going to be scheduling Wednesday evenings to start doing one-on-one with the community. I will be communicating with Sidney Flores, who's been kind of our lead there. I appreciate Sidney's help in just kind of getting all the word out. We had a meeting tonight at Thew Elementary School. The school principal did pull that meeting together. There were a variety of agencies there also addressing the issue. But between the housing specialist, and I contacted Community Legal Services this afternoon, they are also very willing. I do have applications. I'll speak with some of the residents afterwards, but they are very willing to see individuals one-on-one because every one of the pieces is very complex. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Yes, go ahead. I will. Sorry, wait, give us one second because I did close it out. I know you've been waiting here, so we're going to allow you to speak, but you cannot, you can't respond.
Last minute.
Okay.
I know Valerie addresses about the meeting. My name is Maria Gasca, or Rayo Gasca. I know Valerie address about the meeting that they had at our school today. The only thing that I'm aware, it's the, like me, let's say, me, my girls went to the same school, but because I don't have little ones, I don't even was aware about the meeting. And I went and talked to the school office. I was, I've been volunteering the school for 12 years before. Right now, I'm stopped doing it. And I tried to tell them to, if they can move it to a different day, and because no, I mean, I know they tried to help parents with little ones, but then there's other people living there, too, that they need be helpful or helping us. So they don't, they don't really answer me. They say, no, they can move it to a different day. I mean, a lot of people, we don't know about that. Like I said, because we don't got little ones, they, somebody tell me, like, it's just for the, for the families, they have little ones, like, in that age. Another thing, we just make a letter to the, to the Tempe, the Treehouse management to see if they want to come and talk to us because they only sending a representative, and she say, when we asked her, and she say, they will not come and talk to us. So I just, we just make a letter, and I just send it today, and I just going to be waiting for the response, so to see if they want to come and meet to all of the Tempe Mobile Home residents. I don't know if you want to keep a letter, I can leave a copy over here. Thank you so much for your help, and have a great night.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.